Well, Ms. Gill, and I have a bio Ms. Frenella Riley wants me to read. Is the daughter of Terrence and Unisha Gill. She's a ten-year-old, the oldest of three siblings. Egypt Jeremiah attends Carver Elementary Arts Magnet School. She has since been on an honor roll and elected Student of the Month each year. She will be a fifth grader during the upcoming school year. She is a part of the baby Wolverines Dance Team at Carver Elementary. She loves acting and dancing. You can catch her on the jumbo run, keeping up with the Stingas during the Alabama State Football Games. Alright, so will you please stand for the pledge? Please remain standing for the prayer, for the prayer and the pledge. Yeah, we're gonna do the prayer first, then we'll come to you, Ms. Gill. Reverend James C. Orns. Right here, sir.
Let us pray. All wise and eternal God, our Father, we thank you now for this event, for the mayor, for all the counselors, and for all of those that are simply here together, God. We ask for a special blessing and a special blessing from the Holy Spirit to come into this place. We ask that you invoke your presence in this building. We ask that you touch and anoint every tile, every heat pen, every machine, every person that will come and stand in this building today. And God, we ask this in the name of your son, Jesus, who died on the cross. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
Good, thank you, Dr. Orns. Hey, let's give Ms. Gill a round of applause if she comes.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job, good job. Yes, come back, we need to get a picture, my bad. Ronde dressed up for the picture today? Good job, good job.
You got all of us covered?
Hey, everyone, come up here, make sure you got a good picture. You come up closer.
Make sure you get that pink suit.
He's gotta shake a little hand. He think that he's the best.
Wait, God.
Give him your, give him your, give him your picture, give him your camera.
Ronde, give me your camera.
Oh, my gosh.
You got them.
Alright, congratulations, good job.
Good job, good job, good job.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, we need approval of the June seventeen twenty twenty five work session, Ms.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Eight with one abstention.
Alright, we need approval of the June seventeen twenty twenty five regular council meeting.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Eight with one abstention.
Alright, before we get to the mayor's message, we have a couple of council that have appointed personal privileges, Ms. Riley?
Good afternoon. First, I would like to recognize, Dr. Orns, can you please come up front? You and Sister Orns, please come back to the podium. First, I would like to say thank you for your service. Second, I would like to say, we know you was employed for Montgomery Public School System for over forty years, and that is a blessing by itself. Not only were you employed for the public school system, I'm also gonna name a couple of schools that you worked at, at Jeff Davis High School. Also, you received an education from Alabama State University here in Montgomery with a Business Administrative Degree in nineteen seventy-four. You also administered Superintended for the Alabama Christian School of Religions and the Bible, and you also graduated from the Auburn University of Montgomery. You have served in a capacity of not more than just a principal, as a teacher, as a counselor, and also overseeing a state of education of testing. We would like to recognize you for your service that you have put into the public school system, for giving Montgomery Public School System forty years of your service. And at this time, I would like for the mayor to come forth, so we can recognize you with proclamation, and I ask your wife not to tell you.
What was the school name again? Ms. Riley, what was the school name again? What was the name of the school? We are JD. Yeah, come on. Hold on, hold on.
Ronde and Charlie standing together.
Paint them, they can't. It's like an Easter task. Good job.
Actually, very good job.
Alright, Ms. Mitchell, before you go, Ms. Deborah Neal has an announcement that she wants to make for you. Okay, we'll do that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. Esteemed mayor, esteemed city council members, on Thursday, August twenty-first, you have an opportunity to join the Alabamians across this state to honor the internationally renowned Bryan Stevenson of Equal Justice Initiative and Father Manuel Williams. He is an esteemed faith leader and justice leader and pastor of Resurrection Catholic Mission. This event is going to be at the Alabama Shakespeare Festival at seven PM. It is hosted by Alabama Faith and, excuse me, Faith in Action Alabama, and it is the Justice and Action Awards. You may obtain tickets on Eventbrite.com. All of you know how important this justice, these justice leaders are to our community, having generated more revenue for tourism than any other entity in the last ten years. I am honored to be a part of this, and I hope that you will join me and others for this celebration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neal, for that announcement. Alright, Ms. Riley?
Um, yes, Mr. President, I would also like to recognize one of my mentors who's in town, Ms. Elizabeth Carl Hurst, could you please stand for me? The reason why I would like to recognize her, she's a native of Montgomery, Alabama. She graduated from George Washington Carver High School, and she advanced her education at Alabama, in Atlanta, at Georgia State in Human Resource. Also, she was elected as Fairbairn, Georgia City Council and served twelve years before she became the mayor, the first black African female mayor of that town back in twenty twenty-one. She retired from the state of Georgia out of twenty-five years, and she is now also did sixteen years of dedicated service of retirement for the city. She was also the president, Marsha, you're gonna like this, she was also the president of the National Leader of City of Women of Metropolitan of Government. So I knew you would love that, Marsha. So I would like to say she is one of the most influenced of twenty-five influenced women of Georgia, and I was so glad that you are here in Montgomery today, so that we can acknowledge you for all your hard work you have done in Georgia and what you're doing back here in Montgomery. Thank you for being my mentor, and I appreciate all your hard work, Ms. Hurst.
Thank you, Mayor. I know Ms. B was watching on TV tonight, wasn't she? Thank you. Alright, Mr. Mitchell?
President, Council, Mr. Mayor, I had the opportunity to watch this young man grow up. He went to school with my daughter, and we say so many times that we don't make it out of Montgomery, we don't have positive role models like a father in our homes, and that's not true. This young man has made it out of Montgomery, and not only he made it out, but he came, he comes back to Montgomery and pours so much into Montgomery. So at this time, I'm gonna have a proclamation read.
I'll keep it short. Whereas Shawn Deion Hamilton, a native of Montgomery, Alabama, and a proud alumnus of George Washington Carver High School, has consistently exemplified excellence, leadership, and integrity throughout his career in both athletics and public service. And whereas Shawn Deion Hamilton was drafted by the Washington Commanders in the sixth round of the two thousand eighteen NFL Draft and played professionally from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-two before transitioning into coaching with the Detroit Lions. And whereas Shawn Deion, Coach Hamilton continues to serve and mentor young people throughout participation in local football camps and community events alongside other NFL athletes, while also celebrating his recent marriage to his wife, Samaria, the most important part.
Yes.
Now, therefore, I, Stephen L. Reed, Mayor of the City of Alabama, do hereby proclaim July first, two thousand twenty-five, as Coach Shawn Deion Hampton Day.
Coach. Mr. Hamilton, will you come forward? Mr. Hamilton, and your family, you guys come forward, we see this proclamation. Family, you guys can join and make the podium.
So just on behalf of Councilman Mitchell, Mayor Reed, just thank you guys, I appreciate you guys for acknowledging my accomplishments, super grateful, and always thankful to come back to Montgomery, just continue to pour back into the youth, pour back into the city, because they are the future. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations again. Alright, thank you guys, thank you Council Riley, Council Mitchell, and Council, congratulations again to all our recipients and residents. Mr. Mayor, yours?
Man, that's a good way to start a council meeting. Good evening, a lot of recognition, a lot of great work being done by a lot of people throughout the community, so thank y'all for recognizing, I don't think we do that enough. So hopefully we'll see more of that here. I want certainly to say good evening to President, as well as all the members of the city council, all the citizens who are here in person, and those that are participating virtually, we're grateful for all the things that you've been doing, and we're gonna talk about some of the high points. We've had the first part of twenty twenty-five, proud to say that the city is moving in the right direction, we've seen progress, and not just on paper. We've seen it in our streets, in our neighborhoods, and in lives of the people that we serve. Certainly starting in the area of public safety, we're seeing the results of smart, strategic investments, we're seeing violent crime down more than twenty-eight percent, and that's not just a number, those are lives protected, families preserved, and communities made stronger. Nonviolent crime and overall crime are also down significantly, each decreasing by double digits. Our police department under the leadership of Chief Gray Boys is more visible, more engaged, and more committed than ever to community policing and trust building. Think it's being reflected in our recruiting numbers and our retention numbers, and certainly those that are helping us even outside of the police department itself. Now, we know that what the public often sees are officers reacting to crime after it happens, but what many don't see is just how proactive our department has become. That's why we've expanded the Starwatch system, which now includes hundreds more cameras covering key parts of the city. And we're gonna continue to push for that, as you all are talking to your various neighborhood associations and the residents of your districts, as well as those that are here can talk to their friends and colleagues as well about signing up for the Starwatch system. Just last week, dozens more were added to the network, but this isn't just a passive system for viewing footage after the fact. It's an active, real-time tool monitored twenty-four-seven by our Strategic Technology and Resource Center. This allows officers to respond to situations as they unfold, identify offenders faster, and gather solid evidence that holds up in court. If you've been to our entertainment district lately, you've likely noticed more officers on the ground. That provides a more visible reassuring presence while working to prevent issues before they start. Together, these strategies are making a measurable difference, because public safety isn't just about responding to problems, it's also about preventing them. That's why I also support the city council's ordinance regarding the curfew, not just because young people are responsible for the major, majority of the crime, because they're not, but because we all share responsibility to keep our youth safe, especially during the most vulnerable hours of the night. Parents and guardians play a pivotal role. Many of us remember this nineteen nineties public service announcement that asked, "Do you know where your children are?" That question is just as urgent today, and I'm calling on every caregiver to check in, set clear expectations, and partner with us in keeping our young people safe. A city cannot parent anyone's child. We have to do that, it takes a village, but together with accountability at home and opportunity in our neighborhoods, we can give every young person a better chance at success. So you'll see us talking more about opportunities in the evening through our Parks and Recreation Department, through our Department of Cultural Affairs, and other things to give young people an outlet to have a good time and enjoy the summer. However, that needs to be in places that have been designated, not those places that are there for adults, because they're selling alcohol, because they have late-night hours. Those are places for our residents, our people who live and work and wanna play here, for those that wanna have a good time in these entertainment districts. There can be places for young people, but that's not every place, and we have to make sure that we do our parts in making sure that guardrails are put up just for those who may not know any better, or who may not have that guidance at home. What we just acknowledged here was one of the best and brightest in Coach Shawn Deion Hamilton, whose family has been active in this community setting, not just an example for their sons and their family, but for their entire community. And we watched all of them grow up with a lot of pride in what their parents have still. That's just one example of many that has been shown, and certainly there are many, many others that have been recognized here tonight, of those that can attest, and not only to their parents, but to the village that kept them in line. And those are the things that we have to do, and not just in the summer months, but even as we get back into the school year, which will be here before we know it, as we look at the areas of truancy, the data around truancy and Nazantism. We're gonna have to have some tough conversations, some tough conversations with love in this city, about how we continue to keep those numbers going in the right direction when it comes to public safety, and how we continue to go in the right direction when it comes to education and opportunities going up in this community. That means everybody coming together and having not only the tough conversations, but also sharing good feedback that we as a government can use along with the parental involvement and the family involvement and the neighborhood involvement as well. So just wanna highlight all of those things, and just to make sure that we understand what's each and every one of us, what role we can play in making this a better community, in improving our city, our region, our state, and our country. Because again, at the end of the day, it's not just about numbers, it's not just about data and statistics, it's about lives. It's about lives that are impacted in a positive way, so that we don't read about more lives that are impacted in a negative way, that look like those that we see so often in our media space. Now, I do wanna turn our attention to more winning that we've seen happen. On the economic front, we wanna keep everyone abreast of just what our small businesses are doing. I'm gonna get to these highlighting points here, but our small businesses are truly, truly doing good work, and I really appreciate the financial institutions, our Department of Economic Development, so many of our organizations who understand that small businesses are the backbone of our economy, and we're glad to see so many tools that have been brought to the table now, more than we had just even five years ago, much less more than that, to help those small businesses propel Alabama and propel Montgomery to these high-ranking positions that we see here. Number one, for new capital investment in twenty twenty-four, number two, for jobs created by new projects, number two, overall for capital investment, and what that meant for our city is more than one point one billion dollars in local investment and nearly five hundred new jobs created. And in just the first six months of this year, we celebrated groundbreaking at the ninety-four million dollar intermodal container transfer facility, the four hundred and fifteen million dollar, the IGO beverage plant, and new housing developments across the city. These aren't just ceremonial shovel attorneys, they represent real progress, real jobs, real investment, and real opportunity for our residents, and we're not stopping there. We're exploring a new convention center and arena, something this city has needed and deserved for years. This isn't just a dream, it's a strategic investment in our future to bring more tourism, and more events, and more opportunity and jobs to our city, while supporting those small businesses in the retail and hospitality area, and so many more that feed off of people that come into town for meetings and concerts, sporting events as well. This is an opportunity for us to continue creating a space that reflects the energy and ambition of this community, and that goes along with us even going to Paris for the airshow, and making sure that we're looking at future opportunities for growth, and as I was reminded there by city leaders from across the state of Alabama. These type of relationships aren't for those that are in it for short-term gain, this is for those that end for the long-term benefit of their community, whether that elected official sees benefits of that, or gets any credit for that or not, because we have to put the seeds in the ground that are gonna blossom long from now, as it relates to diversifying our opportunity and leveraging our airport and our land capable of that, combined with our intermodal facility, to really become that freight and logistics hub that we believe will help grow this city and this region and beyond. Now, as we talk about more community wins, we're talking about neighborhoods. In the first six months of this year, we've seen major wins for our communities. We've opened the Crump Senior Community Center, the Chisholm Community Center, and the Sheridan Heights Community Center. Each one revitalized and better serve our families, our seniors, and our youth. We officially opened Fire Station Ten, a state-of-the-art facility that not only improves our emergency response, but also reflects our commitment to the safety of every resident in every zip code. And we've broken ground on a new entrance for the Montgomery Zoo, a project that will enhance the visitor experience and strengthen one of our city and our region's most beloved attractions. These milestones aren't isolated, they're part of a larger wave of momentum that has been building across Montgomery, and we expect even more upgrades to our community centers in Phase Two, and our parks, as well as the zoo's new entrance to be completed before the end of this year. It's a reminder that when we invest in our people and our neighborhoods, we all rise together, and when we talk about progress, we're not just talking about numbers, we're talking about neighborhoods. Speaking of people and neighborhoods, we want to invite everyone across the city to bring your friends to July fourth at the Riverfront Amphitheater from eight to nine-thirty PM for our Independence Day Celebration. Come hear the one hundred and fifty-first Alabama Army National Guard Band perform, followed by a spectacular display of fireworks along the Alabama River. Admission is free, and as a reminder, clear bag policies are in effect at the City of Montgomery Events, so please plan accordingly. Be sure to arrive early to avoid long lines at the security screening and potentially miss out on the great fireworks display. Several great food vendors will be available from boiled peanuts, specialty popcorn, snow cones, and lemonade, so join us at this fun, family-friendly event. And remember, this is the only place in the city where fireworks are legal, so if you're inside the city limits and you have fireworks and you're popping them, or you're lighting them, just remember you are breaking the law. So you can be served by our police department, but we know no one's gonna do that inside the city limits. So just wanna remind everybody to come down to a free, safe fireworks show down at the Riverfront on this fourth of July. Now, I would also like to call special attention to the fact that July is Extreme Heat Awareness Month, a time to recognize the serious health risks posed by excessive heat, particularly here in Alabama. With temperatures rising, it's crucial to stay hydrated, limit outdoor activity during peak hours, and check on vulnerable neighbors, children, and pets. Watch for signs of heat-related illness, including heavy sweating, dizziness, nausea, confusion, and a rapid heartbeat. These conditions can be deadly, but they are preventable with awareness and action. Whether you're working outside, enjoying summer activities, or simply commuting, make heat safety a priority. We urge all residents to stay informed, stay cool, and look out for one another as we work together to beat the heat this summer. Montgomery is also continuing to work to improve its pedestrian access and safety across the city. Mark your calendar to join our Economic and Community Development Teams on July tenth from five-thirty PM to seven PM at the Montgomery Interpreter Center to let your voice be heard. This upcoming meeting revisits Carter Hill Road and College Street, an area that connects schools, transit stops, businesses, hunting and college, and Alabama State University. With concerns about dangerous crossings and limited sidewalks near high-traffic zones, this project aims to create safer, more accessible pathways for residents, students, and visitors. We encourage all residents to review the proposed master plan and share feedback at upcoming public meetings. Your input is vital to ensure the final design reflects the real needs and priorities of a safer, more connected Montgomery. To close out my message this evening, I would also like to invite you all to participate in the upcoming Move MGM Color Run on Friday, July nineteenth, starting at eight AM at Buddy Watson Park. This free event promotes wellness across the river region with a fun, family-friendly run walk around the park, complete with vibrant color stations. The first four hundred registrants who pick up their race packet on July eighteen between The first 400 registrants who pick up their race packet on July 18th between 3:00 and 6:00 PM can claim a free run shirt. Race day check-in begins at 7:00 AM. And don't forget to donate to the Heart of Alabama Food Bank when you register. We'll see you there. Mr. President, that concludes my message this evening and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions for the mayor? All right. Thank you. I have council recognition of Fire Chief, Mr. Jordan.
Chief.
Chief Jordan.
It's nice Chief to come down. Mayor got to thank him the other day and I wanted the council to be able to show their appreciation to Chief and if Chief had any words that he wanted to say, you know, to the mayor and the city and, you know, from, from me, you're, you're my fire chief and you're, and more than that, you've been my friend for the last 20 years and I'm gonna miss you. And, you know, you and I got to share the, talk the other day on the phone and we've seen a lot of budgets and, and seen a lot of stuff, but I consider you my friend and I appreciate what you've done for our city, Chief.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. First, I'd like to apologize for-
Chief, chief, hold up. I want him to continue to talk because it sounded like some water was trying to get in the fire hydrant over there, so we're gonna make sure he keep talking.
Okay, Mayor, the heat got, you were talking about that heat today, Mayor. I felt, fell out cutting grass, Pruitt Long here, I just wanted to throw that out there to everybody.
Yeah, go ahead, Chief. I'd like to apologize for the last council meeting. Mayor did an excellent job of, of acknowledging me and I wasn't here. I'm sorry about that, Mayor. I'm sorry about that. But I appreciate that, Mr. Pruitt. It's been a joy working for the City of Montgomery. My wife and I, kinda out of the military and around about looking for a job and was married, had 18-month-old baby and I made a dad a promise I would take care of. And so I worked at another job and someone told me about Montgomery Fire Rescue. And so in 1885, 1885, we moved here. And I'm thankful today, after 40 years, I kept the promise that I promised a father. It's been a joy. I take the job of being a firefighter very serious. It wasn't about just suppressing fires and putting out, answering Mrs. Johnson, not Mrs. Johnson, calls to, for the EMS portion. It was about being involved in the, in the city, whether it's the Council Foundation. And I said that because I wanna bring up the fact I'm one of 14. My dad was born in 1910, my mom, mom was born in 1921, so I'm 14. I'm, I'm the number 13. So out of that union, first black fire chief of the City of Montgomery. You know the history of the City of Montgomery, so I'm proud of that. So it's been a journey, it's been a great journey, but biblically, it's a season for everything. Disappointment is, is completed, it's time to move on to something else. I plan to remain a part of the fire service, but it's gonna be a national, international level. I'm planning on being involved in raising funds for, I'm gonna say, Mr. Pruitt, I talked to you about the dresses for pink.
Yes.
There's a lot of people out there that need help. MDA, hopefully this year, we get closer to $2 million since 1998. So those are the things that I'm passionate about, that I will continue to do for the community and working for the City of Montgomery and anyone that need help. But I wanna thank the mayor for the last six years allowing me to be a part of his administration. We always had a great department, but the last six years was able to kind of reach another level. A lot of accreditations and things that I think that everyone can be proud of, that I hope and I know that many women Montgomery Fire Rescue will continue to make better. Because we have a culture that they know one gear and that's a spirit of excellence and being the very best. And so I, I feel confident that they will continue that. And I just wanna say thank you to everybody, thank you to the citizens for allowing me to be your fire chief. And December would have been 19 years, but there again, it's a season of everything. So I'm looking forward to the next part of my life. And I wanna give a shout-out to Lowns County, because Lowns County got its own history. And I know that I represent not just my mom and dad out of Lowns County, but the people from Lowns County. Because Lowns County sometimes gets, you know, a name that, hey, what's coming out of Lowns County? And so I'm a product of Lowns County and I'm proud of that and I wanna give a shout-out to the people in Lowns County because they always had my back. And I think they always felt like they were very proud of me to talk to me about representing the Lowns County area. So thank you very much. I know the mayor's team's gonna do well. I saw some faces this morning that I hadn't seen at all because I've been on leave, but I know your team will do well and I look forward to assisting any way I possibly can to continue to make the City of Montgomery great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Chief. Yeah, we get a picture for you. Thank you, man. Thank you. Appreciate your service.
Chief, today your last day?
All right.
What is it?
End of month.
End of the month.
Hey, downtown, be everywhere.
Look at Rondae, can you hear that?
Yeah. Right, yes. I appreciate you. I appreciate you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Ms. Pruitt.
Yes, sir.
Any special committee to report?
Mr. President.
Ms. Beard.
Yes, I just wanna do a big shout-out for our Parks and Recreation Department. This past weekend, we had the Dixie Youth Baseball Tournament out at Lagoon Park from Wednesday until Sunday. Forty-seven teams represented. So if you multiply forty-seven times, about fourteen kids per team, and then you take about three folks or more that come in and bring all of that into our city at one time, that is huge. And so just kudos to Brandon Dean, your team, and Billy Taylor, that group out at Lagoon Park, Jacob Cumbie, everybody else in between. Just, it was a great weekend and also we had a great event going on out at Ray Thorington as well as softball. So the next big tournament starts July the 9th. It was hot, very hot. We need a lot of shade structure out there, but that's for another day and another discussion from all of our friends, but it was a great weekend at the ballpark.
Your friends just got short, Ms. Beard.
I got friends in all sorts of places.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Beard. Next, first item.
Mr. President, item one is your consent agenda.
All right. All in favor of the-
We need a motion.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Yes. All right. Hold up, we have a motion to approve, Ms. Pruitt.
Is that the one you and I were speaking about?
Yes.
I'd like for just two weeks for me and you, Mr. Calhoun, to sit down and talk about this with the police department.
Okay.
If that's okay.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Okay, so you want this carried over to the next meeting?
Yeah, here we go.
Item two, ordinance amended section 25, there's 71 in the Code of Ordinances, charges for garbage.
All right, Mr. Dunson. Oh, any questions on item number two? Need a motion?
Motion to adopt.
I have a motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Six.
All opposed?
Three.
All right. Thank you.
Ordinance is adopted. Item three, going over post-ordinance rezoning, 2656 Old Selma Road from an R75M district to the 4Q district restricted to a grocery store.
All right. Ms. Riley? Representative for item three, the grocery store on Old Selma Road.
This is also a public hearing, Mr. President.
Okay. Your name for the record, sir?
Derek Benson.
All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward.
I didn't get his last name, Derek.
Benson.
Benson, thank you.
All right. Seeing none, declare the public hearing is the head of the property for the council, Ms. Riley.
Yes, Mr. Benson, thank you for putting a grocery store in District Four, a grocery store. We're excited, we're looking forward to it. I don't know what your hours of operation gonna be.
It'll be seven to 10.
Seven to 10. I am so excited for our people to be able to have a decent grocery store. Please, if you need my service and help, I will be shopping there.
The store for District Four.
I feel, I feel real old.
You feel real old, right?
I shopped there when I was a kid.
Pretty old, sir. Nick, you got good structure there, Nick, good structure.
They rode horses to the, to the place.
All right, we got a motion.
Traded with gold.
Ms. Riley?
All right, all in order.
Motion to adopt, so we have a motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand.
unanimous, ordinance is adopted.
All right, good luck with your business, sir. We need to keep this love in the room, every councilman.
Item four, review of Infusion Lounge, 3905 Troy Highway.
All right. Review of the Ocean Lounge, representative for the Ocean Lounge, please come forward. Oh, Infusion, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Council, Terrence Johnson, representative, and two of the managers, Betty Broadnax and Morgan Dorsey for Infusion Lounge.
You get it, Ms. Blair?
No, sir.
Terrence Johnson.
Okay, the second one?
Betty Broadnax and Morgan Dorsey, the managers for Infusion Lounge.
Betty.
Broadnax.
Broadnax, thank you.
All right, Mr. Mitch.
Mr. Johnson, how you doing this evening, sir? Brought you in front of, I had a complaint about a particular incident that happened on your, on your, your, your property. I just want to address it. I think it was some issues about your parking lot, the front, the back parking lot. Just tell me, what are you guys doing to make sure that your patrons are, are safe going in, out, leaving your, your establishment?
Different staff members, security personnel walked the parking lot as well as the inside and the front door at the location, pretty much, especially on the weekends. That's used when a lot of people gather about. There's a lot of people hanging in the parking lot, there's a food truck usually there in the back parking lot, and a lot of people hang out at the food truck and at the rear of the parking lot and when it's parked over on the side, they hang out there, but those are not the customers that edit the Fusion Lounge. That's the general people that's just in the community going to the food truck and hanging out back there in the parking lot.
And how many security, and what's the name of your security company that you're using?
The employees work directly for Infusion.
So they are certified, licensed and, but they-
The person that's a security or our direct staff, yes, and the city has already called and got the information, they do that verification.
Okay.
We sent that in to them.
And I guess, is anybody from the police department that can speak on Infusion? Yeah, that's what I'm finna talk about. Yeah, but I have to ask a question on the calls for service.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Before, before we came, we pulled the calls of service out from the beginning of the month, from the time the business opened until now. And during that time, we've had 128 different calls. Now, some of those calls are gonna be called self-generated by officers, but those are just as important because they see stuff going in the parking lot where they have no choice but to stop and put themselves out generating that call. 128 calls at any establishment is way too many calls. We've had multiple people shot in the parking lot, multiple fights in the parking lot that are all being attracted to that business in that area. There's nothing else open during those nights, which is occurring except that business.
Chief, can I ask you a question? Now, how many that, those calls are actually coming from, can we distinguish how many calls are coming from the actual business and can we distinguish, is it coming from their parking lot or the parking lot that's behind their business that Bencock and the Plasma Center is in? How can we, how can we distinguish what address that these calls are actually coming from and who are making these calls?
When I put in this, into the system to pull those calls, I put in that address only and this is what came up under that address.
Self-generated, Chief, does that mean y'all are calling for additional units to come out and help somebody, help one of y'all?
No, self-generated means a patrol officer is driving by, doing normal patrols and they'll see stuff in the parking lot such as a large crowd or somebody causing disturbance and it's to a point where they have to stop and address that and they just cannot drive by.
Okay.
So they'll put themselves out and that's what the self-generated call would be.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Ms. Johnson?
Chief Paul, the, with the address, just for a point of clarification, say it's, which they do, they're hanging out with the car clubs in the parking lot that's in front of the furniture store and where the new hippity is. If I'm riding past and I make a call and the operator asks me, what are you near? What's a landmark? And I say Infusion, that address is gonna be the one that's getting mocked for that call, right?
I can't speak for how the dispatch will put that in there, but more than likely. But like I said, that is the only business open during that time.
But, and I guess my question, Mr. Johnson, I know you only have a small parking lot and I can always pose this to the council. When you have a parking lot, because I have, the Lions Den have the same issue with them parking right next to Avance Auto on the Boulevard. As a, as a business owner, I guess that's to the council, to the mayor, as a business owner, when he's in that big parking lot, Chief, how are we supposed to, I guess, manage something that he, he, he don't, he don't own? I didn't ask Bencock, I didn't ask the Plasma Center to put up signs for us, no lottery, no, no cars. And I guess my question, Terrence, do you allow your, your security to go off your property and go into the parking lot behind you guys and ask your patrons or who's there to lead?
Yes, sir. They do wrong in that area to try to keep the traffic down. Like I said, if another business there and they suppose, I guess, have a city license, the City of Montgomery operate a food truck there, then they're, they're in the back and they have customers there. And they, they spread out through the parking lot and everybody hang out there in that area and they saying they have a license to be there and all the people hang out with them for the rest of the night. But Infusion Lounge has done an outstanding job. It was 130 calls, but he did not say that's from the time that Infusion Lounge opened, which was in October of 2023. We're in 2025 right now and, and it was 98 calls, we opened in 2023, we had 11 calls the first year, it was only a few months, and in 2024, it was 98 calls. But what he did not say that we're in 2025 and we're seven months into this year and it's only been 21 calls. That's a big difference. And it's only 21 calls and two of those calls were from a burger lawn, so it's only 19 calls for this business this year. Those numbers that the chief is talking about is from back in 2024 and 2023 when the facility first opened up. Also, this location has done everything you can possibly do. It is on Starwatch. It's not only on Starwatch, it's on the premium Starwatch where the city does have access to all those cameras and they've been looking at the cameras because we can see every time they look into the camera system. On this property, came to the city council, y'all said we're gonna put a sign up saying for trespassing, for people not to have guns on this property. We sent all the pictures in to our city councilman, that is saying that you cannot have weapons on this property, so you'll be trespassing. We did, it was named, Mrs. Beard, she asked one time why we opened at 3 o'clock, thought we should close at 2 o'clock. From that city council meeting, we started closing at 2 o'clock. I mean, we have done almost everything you can do, securities on a property. One thing that we don't do, if, like if you look at a few points and make somebody have a gun, it is open carry. People can have guns. So what call can you do for a person saying that somebody have a gun? Because you can have guns in the state of Alabama.
Yeah.
So they can make that call, so you have to break the calls down. But like I said, in 2025, it's only 19 calls.
And Chief, this is my question, appreciate you, Mr. Johnson. I was looking at the same thing, subject with a gun, and when you look at, it's 93 calls on there and the two that I'm concerned about is, explain to me, what is investigation unknown and disturbance unknown? How would that call make it?
Investigation unknown, that could depend on anything from us getting a call with a suspicious subject. It could be also us doing a self-generated call because we pulled somebody over trying to figure out what's going on. When we have a breakdown, and I believe we did send copies to you, we basically had 13 subject with a gun calls that went, you know, over the course of this time period. The investigation unknown would be the most numerous because you had 50 of those and those can range anything from a traffic stop to, like I said, a suspicious subject in an area.
Okay. And, and that, that's what I'm saying, I'm looking at the reports and the two that concerns me is shots fired, which was four calls and, and a fight. You know, the other calls, you know, I hate to say that it's just annuit, but when you talk about unknown and then 13 subjects with a gun, I agree with Mr. Johnson, you know, it's the open carry law. This council didn't create that, but when you got people that- And when you look at, it's ninety-three calls on there, and the two that I'm concerned about is, to, explain to me, what is investigation unknown and disturbance unknown? How would that call make it?
Investigation unknown, that could depend on anything from us getting a call with a suspicious subject. It could be also us doing a self-generated call because we pulled somebody over trying to figure out what's going on. Uh, when we have a breakdown, and I believe we did send copies, uh, to you, uh, we basically had thirteen subject with a gun, uh, calls that went, you know, over the course of this time period. Uh, the investigation unknown would be the most numerous because you had fifty of those. And those can range anything from a traffic stop to, and, like I said, a suspicious subject in an area.
Okay. And, and that, that's what I'm saying. I'm looking at the reports, and the two that concerns me is shots fired, which was four calls and, and a fight. You know, the other calls, you know, I hate to say that it's just annuit, but when you talk about unknown and then thirteen subjects with a gun, I agree with Mr. Johnson, you know, it's the open carry law. This council didn't create that, but when you got people that can open carry within the city, I mean, we, we, we can't even get an ID passed in the city that we can say, if you go out there on that case, they don't have an ID to identify themselves with that gun. You have said that you can enforce that. But when it's just like it is now, where you can just carry a gun, that's the state of Alabama law. So, you know, these calls being generated on that, I think it's just unfair to a business that it's on their calls for service, even though you got the call, you have to report it. So, Ms. Mitch, back to your hands.
I have a question, Ronde.
Yes, sir.
Chief, are we spending an extraordinary amount of time attending or going out to this facility and checking on problems or issues or calls?
This is abnormal. Uh, when you look at the time period of eighteen months and the number of calls, we don't typically have this type of, of range, uh, over the time period. Uh, but we answer all calls for service that we get.
And, and I guess my, my, my question to, to that, um, how many places of bill caliber that, that, that cater to our demographics? So if you don't have nothing but one or two places that caters to a, a young demographic, you gonna have all, one, I mean, a lot of people at one generated area, 'cause there's nowhere else for them to go. And y'all about to close down downtown, so they really, they go.
All right, all right, Ms. Mitch, you gotta move on. What you got?
So, um, I think somebody wanted to.
Mr., um.
Ms., Ms. Grimes?
I know you didn't.
No, they, they age is twenty-five.
Hold on, hold on.
It's Beer.
Ms. Beer?
Um, let's talk about the food trucks. Ms., um, somebody from revenue, do we know that we have such said food trucks that have permits to be in that parking lot over there? Can somebody address that? I'm just, I'm just thinking people in your parking lot. I know, but I'm just thinking, they're everywhere, but I'm just trying to ask a question, please. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Do you know of the certain food trucks that are going over there? I mean?
No, they don't tell us. They're going out late at nights.
So they can just go wherever.
Well, nighttime, we don't see them, but we see them in the daytime.
Okay.
I'm just trying to cut the riffraff out of your parking lot. You know, just trying to get some of that gone, maybe you wouldn't have so much confusion in the parking lot that your patrons are going to.
And I met, I met with the chief also last year, sometime ago, when we talked about the food trucks hanging out. And the chief told me that they don't supposed to be there. If we had any problems, and they being there to call, call them and letting them know. But whenever someone says something about a food truck, if an officer were over there, they don't do anything about it. They say they don't know nothing about that. But that's what the chief told me when I met with him last year.
So there's conflicting information there for you, right?
Mr. Johnson, I got a question for you right here, over here. Can, for your property, do you own that property or just, is all part of that big parking lot, or do you own that?
It's the part that we're in. So the part where the furniture place is and way up there with the blood plasma where everybody hang out, we don't own that.
Right. Can, do you have on yours, no carry on your property, no gun on your property, or, or can you, chief, can we do that?
We do. We have that all around the property. All the signs are before you come to the property, on the property, on the door, everywhere.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Mitch, any other questions?
One, one more question. What's the name of the security company again?
It's not the company. It's the individual people that work with us. They work at Infusion Lounge.
Okay, so, so they've been certified and they trained and all of that, correct?
There's people checking IDs. Anyone that works at that location, and it's, it's their responsibility to peer to check the ID to make sure people are old enough and that people are not underage drinking. So the employees there walk the parking lot and everything. It's not a company.
Ms. Riley, that's not what you're asking, is it?
No.
You're, she's asking, is your security post-certified to carry a weapon?
The person that is the security guard, yes. Other than that, it's a regular person. They're not carrying guns.
So it's one person?
Yes. And other people are not carrying guns.
So is, they have a company name, that one person, what's the name of their company?
No, not their company. They work for Infusion.
Okay, so it's not a certified company. They just work for Infusion, so they're not, they're not a company that work for you, just one person that works for you?
And the, and the other people, they're not the right company, in other words.
All right, Ms. Mitch?
So what, what, what I, what I wanna do, um, I, I wanna make sure that we able to identify the patrons that's actually in your, in your establishment or that's, that's leaving your establishment. I want Infusion to come up with some type of, um, s- sticker, come up with some type of stamp that you guys can stamp on them. So if they're in your, your back parking lot, they can't say that we're Infusion, never were in Infusion. So I need you to come up with some type of stamp that you can stamp their hand. So we can identify to make sure that they, they won't, you won't be blamed for somebody that's in the back parking lot if the police come up and they say, hey, we was in Infusion. If they don't see that stamp, or y'all know that they, they're not in there, I wanna make sure that your establishment is not getting mixed up with the, the folks that's gathering in the parking lot. Um, I wanna make sure. So what we gonna do, I'm gonna bring you back in, in, in thirty days. Um, within those thirty days, um, I, I, you know, I can't say that you won't get any, any, um, calls for service. I would like, I would like for you not to have any calls of, of, of service. I'm also would like to, um, set up a meeting with myself and Ms. Angie, uh, with the, um, I think Ms. Angie is an expert that always kind of work things out with us. So I set up, I call you, so we can set up a meeting, and we can kind of do some, some things that's a little different than what we, we, we're actually doing for us that, that back parking lot.
Councilman, I think that Infusion Lounge has did, you know, everything they can almost possibly do to provide and do everything. We have been down here for a view four or five different times. It's not that many calls. It's twenty, nineteen calls this year. I don't feel that Infusion should ever come back in thirty days for a view for nineteen calls and none of them are violent calls. And if there's one call about a shot fired somewhere in the parking lot, other than that, it's miscellaneous calls. There's no fight calls that they know here. So why would one business have to keep coming back for reviews and views over and over for nineteen calls that we don't even know about? There's no calls that we know about that came from the people within this facility or right there in this immediate proximity. So I don't feel that Infusion should keep coming back every time someone make a call to come back. I think it's unfair, and I think this business is how they keep coming back over and over compared to any other business in town for having similar calls.
So I can't speak on any other business. Only thing I can speak on the, the business that's, that lies within District Six. Um, not only did I get this call, but I got a call from a parent. Um, that's why I wanna sit down and get an opportunity to talk to you, 'cause we have not spoken. Um, anytime that somebody that brings a concern, um, especially with, with, with a child concerned, I'm gonna take it to the utmost. I'm gonna do whatever I possibly can. Um, that's why I asked you to, us to have an opportunity to sit down and, and have a conversation. Um, with that conversation, we'll be able to discuss it, 'cause I do not wanna discuss in an open meeting some of the things that the young lady have shared with me. That's why I asked you to come back in thirty days. I don't, I don't, I don't look at what other districts do with, when it comes to, um, businesses in their district. All I'm asking to do is have a conversation with you, sit down, and then we come back in thirty days. I didn't, had, put any other stipulations on you. Only thing I ask you to do is come back to the city council in thirty days.
No problem.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Item five, ordinance established in curfew regulations for the downtown entertainment district.
Mr. President?
Ms. Johnson?
Um, we discussed this in work session. Um, I do have some things I wanna look into, uh, for, before establishing, uh, that was brought to my attention. I'd like to carry it over to the next council meeting to have a vote.
All right. Any council have any objection for a carryover? We don't have anyone signed up to speak about it.
Okay.
No, uh, seventy-seven people. Okay, all right, it's carried over for two weeks.
Item six, running, ordinance running a license to Midstate LLC on behalf of Bethany Church to install a monument sign at seven-twenty-two Cedar Street.
Item six is gonna be carried over, Blaylock.
Item seven, resolution and omnibus agreement and participation in Alabama interlocal mutual aid agreement regarding aid and assistance in the event of disasters.
Mr. President, um, can I go back to, uh, seats and ask a question? Uh, just for clarification, 'cause this is in my district, and I'm speaking to the, um, church board, and it's a little confusing. So is this saying, are you all saying that Midstate can't install the sign? Is that what's happening? I'm trying to understand what the holdup is here.
Think the, uh, Midstate doesn't have a license. I just received an email or text from the, uh, owners of Midstate and say, Kippy Page, sign now, it's gonna do.
Yeah, it's a different sign.
Say it again now?
Signs now. It's gonna make the, uh, petition to do the sign.
Okay.
All right. Ms. Blaylock?
I just read item seven.
All right. Need a motion to suspend the rules? We on item seven?
Motion to suspend the rules.
You have any questions? I have a motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Uh, one and two, are you voting?
Yeah, yeah, we vote.
Unanimous. The ordinance, the resolution is adopted. Item eight, application for restaurant retail liquor license doing business is Wild Craft at twenty-six ninety Eastern Boulevard.
Representative for Wild Craft, please come forward.
Where's Wild?
Wild? No one here from Wild Craft? Change of ownership? We gonna carry it over.
Need to go ahead and have a public hearing, Mr. President.
This is the public hearing. Anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, the public hearing has been held. You standing for number eight? Okay, okay. This public hearing is not being held. It's proper for the council. Don't carry it. It's over for number, for two weeks.
Yes, sir. Item nine, an application for restaurant retail liquor license doing business as Takiaro Yolc and Masino at fifteen fifty Mount Metro.
Okay. Representative for item number nine, please come forward. Miguel Otega, that's you. Okay, your name for the record, sir. Come on, say yama.
Miguel Otega.
Garcia. All right, you have it, Ms. Blaylock?
Yes, sir, I have it.
All right, this is the public hearing. Anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, the public hearing has been held. It's proper for the council. Mr., uh, Samaski?
It's mine.
Public hearing has been held.
Motion to suspend the rules?
Have a motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
A motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business, sir. Thank y'all.
Man, y'all laughing at my Spanish?
You have, somebody has the Spanish.
El poquito.
Mayor, you know he made a D in that, don't you?
I spoke it for four years, it found him out, man. All right, item number ten.
Uh, Mr. President, do you know what Chiquero means?
Yes.
Okay. Item ten, application for lounge retail liquor class one license doing business is Aviator Bar, one sixty-six Comer Street.
All right, representative for the Aviator Bar, please come forward. Your name for the record, Victor Wyatt. All right, this is the public hearing. Anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, the public hearing has been held. It's proper for the council.
All right, like, suspend the rules?
Have a motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business.
Thank you.
Item eleven, application for retail beer and retail table one off premises only, doing business is Bottle Paradise, seventeen oh nine Carter Hill Road.
All right, representative?
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Samaski?
Yeah, the owners of the business have already, uh, I've spoken with them. They are in touch with the, uh, surrounding neighborhood associations. They'll be attending a meeting with them on the twenty-first of July. And then we'll be coming back in thirty days. So we'll carry this thirty days, to the first meeting in August.
All right, this item be carried over?
We need to do the public hearing.
Okay, this is the public hearing. Anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, the public hearing has been held. It's proper for the council. This item be carried over for thirty days.
Thirty days for next meeting?
Uh, the first in August, so thirty days. First meeting in August.
Item twelve, application for retail beer and retail table one owner off premises doing business as La Traditoria, five oh three Cloverdale Road.
All right, representative?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Brian Collins.
Brian Collins. Okay. This is the public hearing. Anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, the public hearing has been held. It's proper for the council. Mr. Samaski?
Yeah, Mr. President, before we vote on this, I just wanted to, to recognize the owners too. And one thing I think that's important about the city is we continue to grow and expand. Uh, it's attracting new business and new investment. Uh, the owners here, Brian and his family came here from California, bought homes. Whole family's out here, and now they've opened up a business, and they're, they're gonna keep on going. So there's other people that see Montgomery as a good bet. So with that, I'd like to spend, um, motion to suspend the rules?
Have a motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business, sir.
Great pizza, by the way. Great pizza.
He's speaking to you from the left.
I was just saying, great pizza.
Great pizza.
Item thirteen, resolution reappointing Stuart Hegley to the housing authority.
All right, Mr. Samaski?
Motion to suspend the rules?
Have a motion to suspend the rules. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Seven. Uh, she did it. Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
Did I ask for the vote?
I said you want people to show up to these meetings. They gotta be on the board.
I'm cool. Ms. Johnson, we gonna need you to make your appointment.
Uh-uh, uh-uh.
All right, we gonna need to make your appointment.
We gonna have to talk about that.
The council gonna make it for you.
Item fourteen, resolution designated nuisance abatement agenda.
All right, need a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules, remain in agenda.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item fifteen, pursuant to section eleven fifty-three B one Code of Alabama, authorization of demolition of unsafe structures at listed locations.
Um, Ms. Blaylock, item thirty-eight oh nine, I wanna make notation that, uh, housing development is gonna work with the owner on thirty-eight oh nine Field Chris.
An extinction?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, all right, need a motion?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Item sixteen, resolution declaring authorizing and assessing cost of abatement of public nuisances on various lots.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right.
And, Mr. President, I do have contingencies for District Four. These are, first ones are gonna be for M P S Katama Elementary, one thousand. Martin Luther King Elementary, one thousand. Safron Elementary, one thousand. South Lawn Metal, one thousand. Carver Elementary, one thousand. Carver High School, fifteen hundred. T S Morris Elementary, one thousand. McIntyre Hankel School, fifteen hundred. Pilgrim Rest Senior Prom, twenty twenty-five, twelve hundred.
All right, anyone else?
Move to adopt.
Hold up, I need to add Pilgrim Rest Senior Prom.
I did, I could. To what?
Pilgrim Rest Senior Prom.
What senior prom? Pilgrim Rest?
Yes, I need that.
How much?
Uh, one thousand.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. Can I do five hundred to that, Ms. Blaylock, please? To the prom, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Blaylock?
Yes.
District two, five hundred Pilgrim Rest, please, to the prom. Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Anyone? That's it. All right, need a motion?
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right, any council member have anything before we go to our public communication?
Hey, Mr. uh, Calhoun. Now, first meeting in August, and there's a national line out. You wanna go ahead and move it today or for the next time?
Uh, we moving it to October?
You'll have to do our ordinance changing it.
We're making ordinance in the next meeting.
You want me to have it on the next?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, we gonna move it for the whole city?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
But when do you want it now?
Well, this, this before.
I like that, but I mean, we, nobody knows it, but I, I like the idea, but nobody knows it.
Mr. President.
Cooked anything, yeah. You don't know that?
Mr. President, I just know that I do have some neighborhoods that are prepared to go in August.
Mr. President, I just know that I do have some neighborhoods that are prepared to go in August, and so I don't want to, they've already hired people to come and do things, so.
Okay.
I, I just think that those that want, you could have, that's the national.
In the next two weeks, just put it on the council agenda for the next two weeks, something, Ms. Blaylock.
Yes, sir, I think they need the opportunity to have their national night out in August, too.
Thank you, any other council member?
We have a District Two National Night Out.
Yeah.
Does your party all month?
District Four, and two, summer eight.
Okay, we gonna move on, you know, when.
Go ahead, Mr. Calhoun.
Everybody's doing it at the same time, I know. It, it's hot, we're not talking about hot, when you're trying to get around to fourteen, fifteen National Night Out, if your community wanna continue in August, then you continue, but when we looking at, when we're trying to partner with the county on what they're trying to do, citywide, it's cooler in October, we get around the city and centralize this location with funding. We're not asking you to ask your community to move to August, but we're trying to be collaborative together on how we work together on this community.
I think all she's saying, Mr. Calhoun, is a little late to do it, but if the county jumped off the bridge, you jumping off with them?
Let's go, Mr. Floyd.
Okay, all right, here we go.
All right, uh, in our public.